Okay, you're you are now streaming, so you are good to call your meeting and Dana will do the roll call.
Very good. We'll open up the virtual meeting for the Planning Commission and BAR Wednesday, July 28th, 2021. Roll call, please.
Spalletta. Commissioner Dobson. Commissioner La Micah.
Present.
Commissioner Evans.
Present.
Commissioner Silva. And Commissioner Quinn.
Present.
Thank you.
I'm present, by the way.
And, oh, sorry, Chair Owens.
That's okay. The way I'm feeling, I don't know if I'm present or not. Okay, a review of agenda items. If there's any items that have arose after the 72-hour posting deadline, this is the point in the meeting where a vote may be taken to add the item to the agenda. Two to three majority votes required. Anything, staff?
Nothing.
Very good. We'll open it up for public comment. Members of the public wishing to address the board on matters within the jurisdiction of the city of Seaside, but not on this agenda, may do so during the public comment period for up to three minutes. Public comment on specific items are heard under that agenda item. For the public, please record your name and state your name. Does it look like we have anybody? I just got a message to Beth that Mike is rebooting his computer. He was having a little trouble, so he'll be online shortly.
Okay. Members of the public wishing to make public comment, please use the raise your hand function. There are no public comments at this time.
Very good. Public comment is open? Public comment is open to the public? We are closing public comment. Public comment is closed. Approval of the minutes of July 14th, 2021. Commissioners? Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve. What was that one?
It's July 14th, 2021.
July 14th, 2021?
Correct.
I do see an error on the
What is that bar?
It's the minutes, Danny.
Oh, I know.
Yeah, I'd have to scroll all the way down to get it right now. What do you see?
I'm present. They have Silva and absent. They also have Silva.
I don't see.
Because Silva was Silva was absent from that meeting.
And so was I.
Does it show you absent?
Yes, but President, it says Dotson, Evans, Quinn, Owen, Silva, and Spalletta. And on absence is La Micah and Silva.
Okay. Can we get that corrected?
What was the what's what is the bar? Just so I can read it out and move forward.
Hold on, let me. For some reason, mine's not coming up right now. I'll have to scroll all the way down to it. Here it is. Yeah, Dotson Evans came in late, but we had Hun Owens, Silva, Spalletta.
So in the motion to approve the minutes, just modify and specify that attendance is corrected, and I have notes on that as well.
Very good. Okay, so Spalletta and Silva were not present. Is that correct?
No, La Micah and Silva.
Okay. They got La Micah and Silva on the absence, but they also got Silva on the present, so that's all we got to correct then.
Correct.
Do we have enough?
Yeah.
There was quorum at that meeting, yes.
Yes. So Commissioner Hun, if you'll just in your
Motion?
In your motion, if you'll just have them strike Silva on the present line. And to let you know, that's number five on the list is what it is.
Couldn't see it. I don't see it.
Yeah, mine's not coming in on the one side, just the main. Normally, you have them all, you know, lined up where you can get them easy.
A motion to approve the minutes with the attendance corrected would be enough at this point.
I moved, yeah, to motion to to correct attendance. That's what Beth?
Correct.
Okay. I moved to motion to to correct the the attendance.
And otherwise, we approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Roll call vote. Chair Spalletta.
But, uh, aye.
Commissioner Dobson. Commissioner La Micah.
I'm saying I wasn't there.
Commissioner Evans.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Aye.
And Chair Owens.
Aye. Very good.
Chair Owens.
Aye.
Before we, I'm sorry, before we proceed, since a few of us are now juggling the functions of this meeting, will you please open up public comment? There was a hand raised. Sarah Howler was looking to speak.
Very good. We will reopen public comment at this time for members of the public wishing to speak on items that are not on the agenda.
Oh, thank you so much. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Yeah, I was like wanting to say something so badly, although it's it's really not that important, but I mean, it is important. The commission has a lot of power and in in, oh, you know, let me just get to what is bothering me so much. And and I hope Commissioner La Micah, you you know, I have a love for the American Legion, but I wish we could have somehow, just in the transition, and maybe the tire company could absorb the cost of it, but before building begins, if there was any way that y'all could have exerted pressure on such the ice sore that it is, and you know, I realize, you know, where it is and the problems that exist around that area, but also because of where it is, so many people, that's the impression they get of our city. So I hope it's okay that I brought something like this up to to this commission, but thank you for letting me comment.
And to let you know, that building is not staying there.
I I I know all the history and I followed followed the you know, I I'm real familiar with American Legion, so I know what's going to transpire. My, I'm just trying to say, I wish we could have done something about the, you know, the the freezer sitting out there, the impy kiddie pool, just all the stuff that's like behind the fence, which so thank you for listening to me.
Beth, did you want to say anything on that?
We can touch base with code enforcement to see if there's a any way we can have things cleaned up.
Okay. Anything else, ma'am? Okay, seeing nothing else, do we have anybody else that wishes to speak for public comment?
No hands raised at this time.
Very good. Seeing nobody, public comment is open still? Public comment is still open and closing? Public comment is now closed. Approval of minutes for June 23rd, 2021.
We got that settled. I'll let you move on to the first item.
I'm sorry, I'm way down too far. Okay. Okay, use permit application, UP 2104, and architectural review application, BAR 2108, James Smur, Claudia Burgos, Smur, and property owners Omar Vivas. Applicant are requesting use permit and architectural review approval for exterior stairway leading to proposed 381.6 square foot second-story roof deck. Staff?
Thanks. This is Beth Rocha, senior planner, presenting this item for both a use permit and architectural review approval site. It is located at 1600 La Salle. It's a corner property on the corner of La Salle and Highland Street. There's a couple photographs for your reference. The project site is in the top picture. I actually looked at Google Maps on this property, and they have done a lot of improvements to it, and what you see is that in the photograph above. And then below, it's taken a little bit further down La Salle, which shows a bit more context of the neighborhood, the slope of the street, as well as the adjacent residence across the street, which is an existing two-story home with balcony off of the second floor. And one more photo showing the upside neighbors' home would change again. Those windows essentially would be lining up with a second story on that adjacent residence if they decided to go up. This is the existing floor plan, a pretty simple layout. La Salle is would be at the bottom and Highland on the right. They have two existing open porches and just a typical single-family layout in terms of the floor plan. What we're looking at here for the use permit is the proposed exterior stair that is proposed to lead to a 381 and a half square foot roof deck, which essentially will be built behind or to the left of this porch on the far right and over the bedroom two and bath, which we'll get to further details on that in a bit. This is a photograph showing the area, essentially the rear yard of the home with this dashed red line kind of representing where the proposed exterior staircase will be constructed, as well as giving you an idea of the scale in terms of the distance that they will be able to observe from the adjacent residents, as well as some idea of what's going on in that space. There's some items stored directly against the neighboring fence. It doesn't appear to be a space that is used, whereas on the applicant's property, if you can look a bit further back on that photo of the left, there's a lot of gardening area as well as some outdoor seating. It's a pretty active space that they use already, and not I have not heard of any complaints regarding noise when this was routed to the respective disciplines. So this is the proposed roof plan and deck, again, pointing to that area to the left of the existing porch that's facing Highland, and it's going to be relatively small, considering the amount of roof area that they could max out on. It's going to be 12 and a half feet by 27 and a half feet. And in addition to constructing that new roof deck, they are also proposing to go from having a primarily flat roof structure to changing the slope of the roof from a 4 to 12 slope in various areas and directions, which kind of minimizes the building up that they're doing for this area of the roof deck. The materials and colors are going to match that of the existing home. I believe they are proposing to use more of a composite tile structure, so there won't be cracking or breaking, and then it won't be prone to having mold or moss grow on it. Then the images on the left are part of the glass railing that they will be constructing as part of the roof deck on the west side only. And we'll go through the elevations next, so you can get an idea of how they're going to be enclosing that feature to a certain extent by creating the railings and walls. So the existing elevation on the east, the top image is existing, and the bottom image is proposed. Here you can see the changing in terms of the roof slope, as well as the new half-solid wall that will be built and the finishes that will be used, as well as the existing staircase, and then you can see a small indication to those glass panels, which are more visible on the west elevation. There's a south elevation, so this is from that neighboring property to the right or to the rear. The stairs going up to the roof deck, and again, those half-walls kind of creating more of a buffer of that space. It's not as visible from the neighboring properties. West elevation, this is the best view that you get of that glass element railing, which is just them essentially wanting to maximize the view that they're going to be affording themselves by creating this element, as well as, again, those roof slopes and the maximum height of the deck is 17 feet 1 inch, and then there's varying heights with the sloped roof, just because the site itself is sloped, but the heights range from 14 feet 4 inches to 17 feet 5 inches. And here's the north elevation or the front of the home, where you can see this element at the bottom of the proposed elevation showing again that half-solid wall at the roof deck. Here's a rendering that was provided by the architect, giving a bit of a asymmetric view and showing the scale and how that element fits into the existing home. And then we reached the recommendation, which is to approve the project, given that it meets the findings that are necessary for the granting of both the use permit and the Board of Architectural Review in seeing that they're using, for the most part, matching existing materials with, as you see it rendered for the existing home and the photographs that were provided. The proposed use is an accessory structure. It's allowed in the zone. The proposal is also consistent with elements of the general plan. Project is compatible with the existing home and with the existing neighborhoods, in the varying heights and how people have dealt with their sloped lots. The site is physically physically suitable for what is being proposed, and granting the permit would not be detrimental to the public interest, health, safety, convenience, or welfare. So staff recommends approval of both the use permit for the construction of the exterior stairway and Board of Architectural Review approval for the construction of the second-story roof deck and the associated architectural modifications, meaning the increased roof slope, as well as the materials.
Mayors, anything for staff?
No, but I just want to announce my arrival, guys. Sorry, I'm late.
Good evening, Commissioner Silva. Beth, I have one question. Is the whole entire roof now going to become a tile roof? Because I know it's just a facade on there right now. It just goes up and the the whole roof isn't done that way. Is this going to be a change? It looks like it on the drawing. Just want to make sure.
Yeah, and I can go back to to maybe one of the photos that I took that shows the extent of it from in terms of what you see from the street. So yeah, from the renderings, the whole roof will be raised to a 412 and finished with those tiles.
Okay. Commissioners, anything?
Yeah, I have one question. And and the deck is going to be open, so there'd be no roof on the open deck. Is that correct?
It will be an uncovered roof deck, correct?
And one last question, Beth. I know that we have a we have a code about decks being put up overlooking somebody's yard. We've had no problem with that?
No public comments were received by the neighbors expressing that type of concern.
Okay, very good. Anything left for staff commissioners? Seeing none, we will open it up to the applicant.
Hello, we are the designer and applicant for this project. Yeah, we we just wanted to highlight that it's going to be less than 18 feet high. And we are going to use a lightweight roof material that is going to match the look of the existing house.
Okay, anything for applicants, commissioners?
I'd just like to I'd just like to compliment them on their their plan. They took they took a difficult roofline, a difficult pitch, and I think they implemented, you know, they incorporated the the deck that they're trying to design very nicely, and I think they're really upgrading the whole look by doing so.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anything else for the applicant commissioners?
Yeah, I want to say, when I driven by there, I was a at at first look, I was curious, and just like Commissioner Evans said, I was curious to see how it would, they would incorporate that deck. Also noticed the neighbor that's just directly above them on La Salle, so I I'm just curious, have you heard any feedback from your proposed project on that?
All the neighbors, we haven't received any complaint or anything. They they are, they agree with the design. Yeah, they're fine, but thank you.
Very good.
Commissioner Silva, anything? Commissioner Hun? Okay, Commissioner La Micah, you just spoke on it, right? So we're good?
Correct, yes.
Very good. We will open it up to public comment at this time. Any from the public wishing to speak on this matter, may do so for three minutes. Please state your name.
As members of the public wishing to speak, please use the raise your hand function, and you will be unmuted. Now, hands are raised. Chair Owens.
Okay, public comment is still open? Public comment is still open and closing? Seeing nobody raise their hand, according to staff, we will close public comment and bring it back to commissioners. We'll start with you, Mr. Silva.
I apologize. I was arrived late in the presentation, but what I did see, it looks nice. And if I did not receive the packet link in advance, so just a heads up, I don't know if if I was not on the email, so I don't have the benefit of the whole presentation. I'm going to defer to the rest of the commissioners.
Let you know that came in on July 22nd, Mr. Silva.
Let me look back.
We'll check our list, and then also, Mr. Silva, if you would just not vote on this item, that would probably be best.
Commissioner Hun?
Um, I have no problem with it. I used to live on that block, the 1800 block. And there is a house on that block that has a deck right in the middle of the street, like inside between, you know, and there is this deck, so, you know, it's a nice design. It's a I see that house is a lot of improvements. I think I believe that house used to be like a police station or fire station back then, a while back.
That was auctioned off for this by the city.
Exactly. So a lot of improvements, and I'm all for it.
Very good. Commissioner Evans? Nothing to say? Okay, Commissioner La Micah, anything?
No, I think it fits the neighborhood.
Vice Chair Spalletta?
Nothing.
Very good. And same here. So can I get a motion?
I make a motion to pass use permit application number UP 2104 and architectural review application number BAR 2108.
Second. We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We need to do a roll call.
Vice Chair Spalletta?
Yes.
Commissioner La Micah?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Silva?
I'm standing, please.
Commissioner Quinn?
Aye.
Your motion has passed.
I guess you don't want to hear from me, huh?
Oh, I'm sorry, Owens, Chair Owens.
I vote aye. I'm glad I'm not the only one feeling this way.
Chair, Chair, she's not in your class, is she, getting back at you?
Very good. Okay, we're going to go to application 2108. Mr. and Mrs. Doug Hanson, property owners, and Bill Medford applicant are requesting use permit approval for an exterior stairway leading to an existing second-story master bedroom balcony of an existing two-story, single-family resident located at 1221 Luxton Street. Staff?
This is Beth Rocha, presenting again this item. There's a vicinity map, 1221 Luxton. It's located one parcel off of the corner of and and he'll be there's a couple pictures of the existing home. A second-story addition is only over a portion, but it does have an internal connection to the primary residence, and as you can see in the photograph in the right, there is an existing balcony off that second-story master bedroom, which was originally permitted, I think, around 1988. The two-story home is about 1900 square feet, and there's an existing two-car 525 square foot garage. What they're proposing to do in this project is pretty simple. Here's the site plan showing Luxton existing concrete drive leading to what you just saw in that photo of the master bed over the existing garage, and then the new stair being proposed is on the left and shaded here. It more than meets the setbacks that are required, a rear of 15 feet and a side of five. It's observing a side setback of 13 feet, and the nearest structure on the adjacent property is a garage, so there's not that many concerns about privacy had it been like a living room or bedroom function. Here's proposed elevations showing the proposed stairway leading up to that existing balcony off of the master bedroom and then the east elevation. Some material specifications and construction details. It's going to be constructed entirely out of redwood and potential for redwood or Trex decking on the tread of the stairs. And staff recommends approval of this application for that exterior stairway. It, similar to the other project, doesn't present any issues with the adjacent neighborhoods regarding safety or health, safety, and welfare, and the site is physically suitable for it. The proposal is consistent with and complies with the zoning code and the general plan, and the design and materials that they're choosing complements the architecture of the existing home.
Any questions for staff commissioners? Very good. The only one I had, Beth, if you could bring up the stairway, is how come they put the landing halfway up and didn't shorten the stairs by not having that?
Here, you're speaking. I'm not sure, but the designer is on the call, so we can ask for clarification on that design decision and see if it's something that could be modified with a condition if necessary.
It would just take it out of that window is all.
Right.
Very good. Anything, commissioners? Seeing none, we'll open it up for the applicant at this time.
Hi, I'm Bill Medford. I'm the architect for the Hanson's. The the in answer to your question, the reason they wanted the landing in there, first off, they're getting older. One of the reasons for this stair is in the middle of the night, their dog has to go to the bathroom. Rather than having to trip rates down the stairs, et cetera, et cetera, they can let the dog out and go down that way. It is an 11 feet from the deck down to the grade. And being that they are getting older, when they go up and down the steps, they would like to be able to rest going up the steps. I know that seems odd, but anyway, that is the reason for the landing. And that's pretty much so it.
Mayors, anything for the applicant?
No, I just want to go on record that I completely agree with the the landing halfway up. At my age, that's important.
You need more stairs than Mr. Evans. Mr. Silva, anything?
No, I don't have any issues.
Commissioner Hun?
No, I don't have no issue either.
Commissioner La Micah?
None for me.
Vice Chair Spalletta?
None.
Very good. We will open it up to public comment at this time. Anybody wishing to speak on this matter may do so for up to three minutes. Please state your name.
I was wishing to make public comment. Please use the raise your hand function, and you will be unmuted. I was wishing to make public comment. Please use the raise your hand function and you will be unmuted. Chair, no hands are raised for public comment.
Public comment is open. Public comment is still open, getting ready to close. Staff sees no hands. Public comment is closed. We will bring it back to commissioners. Commissioner LaSilva, anything?
I'm fine. I'm sorry, I was muted. I, I have no issues with it. I, I appreciate the break for, for the rest and I, I saw what you saw in that it, it encroaches into the the window, but it is on a side yard. I don't think it's going to matter.
Yeah. Very good. Commissioner Han?
Same here. I have no issues with it.
Very good. Commissioner Evans?
Agreed.
Commissioner LaMica?
No issues.
Vice Chair Spalletta?
Fine with it, no issues.
Very good. Same here. Can I get a motion for UP twenty one dash zero eight?
I make a motion to approve use permit application number UP twenty one zero eight, Mr. and Mrs. Doug Hanson, property owners and Bill Medford applicant.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 We'll have a roll call vote now, Beth.
Commissioner LaMica?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Silva?
Aye.
Commissioner Quinn?
Aye.
And Chair Owens.
Hey, aye. We will go to use permit application UP twenty one zero five, Peter Camarato, property owner and Katseblin applicant are requesting approval of a use permit to allow for the onsite sale of beer, wine and spirits under a type forty-seven alcohol license at restaurant Ocean Grill. Staff?
So this is an alcohol use permit proposed at in a existing restaurant that was recently opened, Ocean's Grill. Feel free to stop by and get some food. It's very interesting. And so they are asking for a type forty-seven ABC license, which authorizes the sale of beer, wine and spirits for consumption onsite as part of an existing eating establishment. The restaurant will be open from eleven AM to eight PM Thursday through Sunday. The surrounding area is located just off the West Broadway Urban Village. This shopping center isn't in the West Broadway Urban Village, but it's immediately adjacent to it. And then we have the actual shopping center in which it's located. Right next door is the Mountain Mike's Pizza and then also Buffalo Wild Wings. There's the grocery outlet, Chase Bank, Neo yogurt and a number of other businesses. We do have a shared parking van. You can move on to the next slide, please. So this is the surrounding area. You can see the Mountain Mike's and the Buffalo Wild Wings. This is the patio front entrance, current front entrance, proposed to become an outdoor patio area, which we'll show later of the Ocean's Grill. And then here we just have some pictures of the actual parking lot with the FedEx. And then the main drive along Broadway facing east. And then the corner there of Fremont and Broadway with grocery store and then gas stations and the metering subway and Baskin Robbins.
For some reason, we're losing your volume.
My apologies for probably me turning away for a second because my sheets are out of order. So bear with me for a second. So here we have the site plan showing where the actual suite is located at the very end, right at the corner of Fremont and Broadway. And so if you can move on to the next slide. This is the floor plan. So we have seating immediately when you enter to the left and then additional seating to the right. Twenty-six seats on the inside. And then if you scroll to the next slide, we have the proposed outdoor patio, six hundred and sixty-five square feet, which will house twenty-four seats. It is proposed to mimic the existing railing gate that's required currently by ABC, but apparently is going to soon no longer be required. But they do intend to have the same designed black metal picket fencing as the Buffalo Wild Wings has just to the southern portion of this. And that's a photo of the actual Buffalo Wild Wings photos. Onto the next slide, please. So we do need to make a public convenience or necessity. This is for all alcohol licenses. So this alcohol area, this business is located in Census tract one three seven. So this area has fourteen on-sale retail alcohol licenses. The maximum concentration of on-sale alcohol licenses is nine in this census tract. So it is considered over-concentrated. State law does not mandate the criteria used the public convenience and necessity. It's actually the responsibility of local jurisdictions. By making a determination of public convenience or necessity for the establishment of an additional on-sale alcohol license as part of a sit-down restaurant, the city acknowledges and supports the applicant's request for a type forty-seven on-sale general eating place retail alcohol license from the ABC despite the tract's over-concentration of alcohol outlet licenses. Because it is an ancillary use to the primary restaurant use and does not pose any risk to the general health and safety. So based on that, we would determine that this is not going to be impactful to the area. And then further, just as we discussed at our last meeting, we are proposing to make ancillary alcohol sales and approved use for a restaurant. Currently in the West Broadway Urban Village, ancillary alcohol sales as part of a sit-down restaurant. It makes sense. Site. For the West Broadway Urban should also be permitted to have ancillary alcohol sales. It is consistent with the general plan and local zoning ordinances, provided we approve this alcohol use permit. And staff does recommend approval of the project based on the draft resolution. And I'm happy to answer any questions and I believe the applicant is also available if you have any.
Commissioners, anything for Beth? Beth, I just have one question. You did show the front of the building that does not have a railing around it. There's no intent to put any more tables out in the other front, is there?
That picture of the front is where they're proposing to put that outdoor patio area. So there is no current outdoor patio area. There is one just immediately south at the Buffalo Wild Wings, which is what this photo is on the right. And then this shows the proposed plan of where the Ocean's Grill outdoor dining area will be.
Yeah, I'm only asking that because I know that down at the, the beer place, we made them put up a fence to serve alcohol outside. And I just want to make sure that we'll have that if we, if we enlarge this patio, that it will have a fence around it, like the rest of it.
Yes, for ABC, they are required to have a fence and they will have a forfeit fence, which will be designed to match the existing fence at the Buffalo Wild Wings, which has been added in the condition of approval.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Commissioners, anything for staff? Seeing no questions, we will open it up to the applicant.
Cap Lim, if you'd like to make any comments, feel free. If not, we can move on. Raise your hand if you'd like to make any comments. I do not see any hands raised.
Okay, we will open it up to public comment because we hadn't done that. It was just open to the applicant. Just going to make sure we follow the rules.
Anyone wishing to make public comment, please use the raise your hand feature and we will call on you to be unmuted. We do now have a member of the public wishing to speak.
We don't, you said?
We do.
Oh, we do. Is it Cap Lim?
Yes.
Very good. Go ahead. You have the floor.
Hi, I I have some of the adjustment to make on our proposal. It looked like we mistakenly applied for a forty-seven instead of a forty-one ABC license.
And so I believe a type forty-one is just for beer and wine. So you're not supposed to do spirits as well.
Okay.
We can adjust the resolution to be for a type forty-one. So we would need to officially call an amendment for the resolution to a type forty-one, but it just means no hard alcohol, just beer and wine.
Right, right. That's perfectly good. Also, I have another one I wanted to bring up. Our operation, hours of operation might change to a nine o'clock or nine thirty. Would it be something we can adjust as going forward?
I believe if you wanted to increase it moving forward, it would need to be zoning administrator approved, but we could again amend it as part of the resolution to allow up to nine thirty PM, provided the commission is accepting of that.
Beautiful. And it will also be opening on Mondays. Would it be okay with you guys to just amend, adjust to the, with you guys as going forward?
We can bring it back to the commission to discuss and they'll make a determination.
As far as opening, that's, I guess it is a land use, but normally that's up to staff, I think.
Okay, sounds good.
I don't see any issue with operating Monday through Sunday, as would normally be allowed for most restaurants.
Well, especially that place, it's not around any residential.
Great. If I may, this is Beth Rocha. So regarding hours of operation, this was a permitted use. So there weren't any stipulations on when the hours had to be stopped regarding the issuance of alcohol permit along with those hours of operation. It would be less that there would be a condition specific to the hours of operation of the business, but that alcohol only be served when food is served as well. So modify that condition. Dana, if the PC allows for that to happen in amended motion regarding this project.
Anything else from the public? Seeing none, public comment is still open. Public comment is still open and closing. We will close public comment now and bring it back to commissioners. Mr. Silva, would you like to start?
Sure thing. So just a couple of comments and seeing what, first of all, I have no issue with all the hours that, you know, are reasonable for them to operate. I don't want to put any hamstrings or restrictions on any businesses who want them to succeed. The second thing is, as staff mentioned, the, you know, the character of that area in the West Broadway Urban Village, I mean, we want, you know, we want that to come alive. We want people to eat there and have beverages and hang out. And so I have no issue with, with the hours of operation being longer into the evening or with the, the beer and wine sales as an ancillary use to the, to, to the food or ancillary to the food. So I think it's all great and I really wish them success. I know that this is a really challenging time for restaurants. And so, you know, I applaud them for being brave enough to open in these times and I, and I just, I hope that they, you know, we can give them every tool to, to succeed.
Thank you, Commissioner Silva. Commissioner Han?
I echo Commissioner Silver. I, I just want to thank the owner applicant in opening the restaurant in our city and investing, you know, capital in our city. It's, restaurant is pretty, it's very hard and I just, it's, it's just grateful for them to do that. And I just wish them the best of luck and successful in the coming years.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner LaMica?
Yeah, I have to concur with what the two previous commissioners stated. I'm just glad that the applicant chose that site to open up a new restaurant.
Thank you, Commissioner LaMica. Commissioner Evans, you have the floor?
Complete concurrence with everything that's been said. I'd just like to add that I like the patio seating and I like the way that they've kind of mirrored what's going on at Buffalo Wild Wings. I think that's going to be very synergistic. And I just hope to go by there and see both sides just crowded and people having a good time.
Thank you, Commissioner Evans. Vice Chair Spalletta?
Yeah, I fully agree with everyone. I, I do believe to get the alcohol licenses is a necessary thing, especially since you're kind of sandwiched in with, next to the Wild Wings and the pizza place and it kind of, you don't want to be the, the odd man out, not being able to serve anything. I love the hours, I love the days. It definitely gives our city more options, which, which I, we, we are still lacking. And thank you for opening up here in our city. And I'm looking forward to the patio.
Thank you, Commissioner Spalletta. I have to concur with what the other commissioners have said. Alls I ask is that the city residents support these restaurants, you know? All of our restaurants were hurting and it's good when we go out to them and, and give them our support. Thank you. Okay, do I have a motion on this? Don't be shy.
Okay, I'll move to, I'll move to the motion. I'll make a motion to approve use permit application number UP dash twenty-one dash oh five, allowing for onsite sale of beer and wine.
Do I get a second?
I second.
Specifically call out the amendments that change from a type forty-seven to a type forty-one. And then that condition of approval number three will be changed to read that alcohol sales shall only be served when food is
So can we just get that amended on to the amendment, Commissioner Han? To switch it from a type forty-seven to a type forty-one?
So read it back again? You want me to read it back? Okay, add amended type forty-one.
And we had a second, right? So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye. Roll call, please.
Chair Spalletta?
Aye.
Commissioner LaMica?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Silva?
Aye.
Commissioner Quinn?
Aye.
Chair Owens?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Very good. Okay, we'll move on to reports from commissioners. Anything commissioners? I know we had some, staff will probably get to them under the staff reports.
I, I just have one. Is the property that's next to the post office, is that still in limbo or is, is that still being worked on?
It is moving forward.
Yeah, I believe they're supposed to be breaking ground later this year.
Okay.
Congratulations on that, staff. Like to just give you a congratulations on that because that's going to so beautify that area. Anything else from other commissioners?
I get a question for staff. The, the closure of Monterey Road by PG&E is, it was supposed to be through August fifteenth. Is that still on schedule? Just curious.
I'm not certain. We'll have to follow up on that.
You know, speaking of that, can, when, when we follow up on that, Beth, is there any way? There's a certain construction worker over there that parks their car right there under the light. And what it does is it triggers that light and holds it green for people coming out of there. But since it's blocked, it's no, if we could just ask them not to park there, it holds up traffic in the morning like you wouldn't believe because it just sits there green because the car's right still on the actual magnetic.
Yeah, I'll include that and get in touch with vehicle abatement as well.
Thank you. So since that's the reports from commissioners, seeing nobody else, we will have reports from staff.
I don't have anything. Dana, would you like to share anything?
I do have one thing to share, though I'm a little bit trepidatious after your last meeting. So I'm going to share my videos where I can see my face. I haven't met any of you in person, but I am sadly announcing that this will be my last planning convention meeting.
What is going on with the city of Zusai?
I'm so sorry. I am actually moving to Napa County.
Oh, well, congratulations there.
So, yes.
Beautiful place. Well, good luck.
Serving with all of you and I'm sad I didn't get to meet you all in person, but it's been, been wonderful. Serving with all of you and I'm sad I didn't get to meet you all in person, but it's been, been wonderful and I'm going to miss you all and miss Seaside.
Thank you for that. Um, I did have the one question. We asked a couple of questions last week about the, um, the garage deck down on, uh, Or Grove Avenue, uh, the White House, I think it's 62 or something like that, but we, I noticed that the, um, all the railing, uh, posts are in, but there's no cable, but yet people are using that. And I was just wondering how that got a use permit without the cable around the top up there to give the, uh, the fall restraint.
That's where you have to follow up on that one.
Right, no, I recall this discussion. Um, I believe I was waiting for an address that I did not receive. So I wasn't able to reach out to David Little, the building official, to see what he had approved on those plans in the building permit set. Even if it was a detail that was missed on the use permit set that we saw, there's no way that it would have made it past that point. It just might be that the owners are, uh, being impatient with the construction slash inspection progress and are wanting to use their deck before. It's really safe for them to use their deck. So I can be in touch with, uh, David Little if I have an address that I can refer to or a use permit number that I can refer to, to pull that address. Otherwise, I was out all last week. I just landed today around two o'clock. So I apologize if I have a email that's been unread.
Very good. And no, I forgot that, that's on my, I didn't send the address. I will get it to you. Anything else commissioners?
Just real quick, I, I want to correct. You don't need to check your distribution list. I did receive the, um, the, I just didn't look back far enough and I got confused because I was sick last time we met. So I was, I wasn't looking at the right place. So my apologies, guys. You guys did everything right.
No worries. Okay, do we have a motion for adjournment?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second? I'll say. Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Hi.